Seven o'clock, I'm gonna bring the Thursday, October third, twenty twenty four, seven P M. Board of Selectmen meeting to order, all three selectmen are present, town administrator is present, fire chief's present, town clerk's present, Leo is Leo Taven for the benefit of the public, and Linda Nickerson will upload that to the town web plate and to YouTube.
Can you mention Christine Flynch, she's with the Rec Committee?
Oh, the Rec Committee's here, Christine, thank you. Okay, gentlemen, we have small business.
We'll make a motion to approve the regular meeting minutes of September nineteenth, twenty twenty four as amended.
I'll second that.
Okay, I'll make a correction then, because it says September fifth on these meeting notes at the head.
What? Are you sure?
I'm sure that this copy says it, do you wanna redo the cover sheet of it?
Yeah, I will.
Okay. We'll hold off to sign them at eight.
Thank you.
Okay, so the motion's been made on the meeting minutes, we're gonna correct the date from the fifth to the nineteenth. Any, anybody have any questions on it? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. They've been approved, we will sign them in a few minutes. I'm gonna open up for public comment, this is for people that aren't on the agenda. Looks like we're okay. One from that, public comment. Shouldn't be a chance later in the meeting. Going to town business, we've got Jennifer Cormier, town clerk business. Jennifer, how are you doing?
I'm alright.
Cratchits are hiding, good?
Yeah. Sometimes we're sometimes without.
You wanna help her grab that stuff, Justin, if she doesn't?
No, I'll hand it to you, I'm fine.
Okay.
Yep. So, regretfully, I have to announce that Linda is retiring officially. So here is her notice letter, that's the original, if you want a copy of it, I made a copy.
I think we'll put a copy in the agenda, if you wanna leave a copy on the desk right here.
Okay.
Just as a little personal. We'll put it in her file.
Yeah, so that's an original for the file.
I bet you're ecstatic that you have backup help that you hired a couple of weeks ago.
Well, that's not gonna go, I'm very sad to be losing Linda.
Understood.
Yeah.
But you initially have some help initially.
One day a week, some weeks. Yeah, so no, I'm very thankful, Pam's been wonderful, you know, but it's not like having a deputy, so I will be neat to look for someone.
So you'll be looking for advertise?
Okay, well, I do wanna thank Linda Landry for doing this part-time for a period of time, and helping us get through at least that one election. She says she's going till November ninth.
Yeah, so she's going through the following election week, so that's huge. So she's finishing out both the second election and the.
If you could thank her from the selectmen for that as well, help us through that, that's great.
It is wonderful.
But yeah. I'm glad that she is gonna retire fully, I mean, it's time well deserved, and we're gonna leave a copy of that, Linda's retirement for you.
It's gonna go in her personal file.
Yeah, so there's an original for the personnel, and there's another copy, and we can make more copies of it.
Yes, that's what.
Okay, Jen, so our next steps are, are we gonna look for somebody in town for a?
Yes, the deputy needs to live in town, and if it's, if somebody's, doesn't live in town, there are certain duties they can't do, to do with elections and to do with vital records.
Right.
So like Pam is limited in what she can do because she's from out of town.
Yeah, I understood that when you brought her on.
Yeah, but she's been wonderful, she was just here today, such a huge help.
Sounds like she knows a lot.
Yes, yeah, she's experienced and aware, so it's easier than training someone totally brand-new, but of course, that's probably what we need to do.
So you're gonna work with Lena advertising it?
Yeah, I haven't had a chance to, until I gave, you know, she gave her notice, and I was able to share that with you officially, I haven't, nobody, I haven't told anybody.
Okay, great.
So, you two guys, selectmen should be the first to know, because you're her employer.
Yeah, that's awesome.
So I haven't made a lot of next steps, I am going to the town clerks conference next week, so that'll be a good opportunity to network with people and get ideas, and you know, now I could feel free to email somebody and say, what do you put on your job postings? And you know, start.
Get some support.
Yeah, and I think as soon as you guys can, get it out there on our town website, and if we need it to, we can put it up on the sign out there.
I thought there was, there were quite a few that ran, that ran a view for the position when you were deputies, so there might still be some interest locally.
You, I'd probably, you probably add those names.
I do, yeah. Jennifer and I will work together on it.
Okay. Let us know if you need any help from us. Jennifer did ask me to look at a couple of areas of movements and file cabinets around, so she could have two upfront stations, I've still gotta crawl under the building and see if structurally we can move very heavy cabinets and.
Linda did actually talk with me, and it may, if they wanted to expand the window a little bit, she said, I, it seemed like structurally it was okay to proceed with expanding the window, two separate workstations in front, there was just some bandings, some ideas back and forth. But it's gonna be up to the town clerk how she wants to do it to configure her office.
Right, yeah, I wasn't looking at expanding the window yet, knowing that that's another, you know, thing to plan. Or at least, yeah, bigger project, but to at least move the one particular file cabinet in front, and then ideally get a four cabinet, a four drawer file cabinet, instead of the one that's off to the side that would be moving just because we're running out of space. And we do have cabinets in the back, but those are, you know, old, and whoever goes in there, then your hands are kinda itchy and things, we're dealing with them afterwards, so we can't have active files there, not to mention that they're not in drawers.
I think you also need to address the printer drawers as well, right? See if you can add.
Yeah, I don't know that we can add, yeah, I'll look, but we're gonna, we're looking at networking all the printers in my office, so that we're more versatile and making some other, you know, just changes with the I T, they'll take care of that, so.
Okay. All right, anything else for us?
No, my, my reason for coming was I had to let you know about Linda's departure, unfortunately. So, but yes, very grateful for the notice she's giving, and that she's serving through the election, and for helping me all this time, you know, it's been wonderful.
Yeah, definitely thank her for us, if we see her, we could thank her individually as well.
I'm sure you'll see her election day?
Yeah. Unfortunately, for a long time. All right, that sounds good, thank you, Jennifer, thanks for coming in. Okay, Christine, Recreation Chair, Halloween and Holiday Events.
All sorts of things, do you want me to come up front?
Sure you can. We love the front service.
Alright, so, looking at doing Halloween on the thirty first, in line with the hours that he sent, I think it's five to seven for trick or treating days.
Seven, okay.
The garden club and the roots club would like to do pumpkins again on the town halls, which is making sure that that's okay on the steps.
Yeah, just on the front steps, so there we go.
Yeah.
Not smashing pumpkins, right?
No, never the plan.
Nothing up on the protocol, we'll see there.
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, just the front, silky immediate to the steps, so we'd set them up on the thirtieth, so they'd have at least a overnight, and then they'd come down the night of the thirty first.
And just make sure we're careful backing up to those, because last year we ran out of the flag.
Yeah.
Light, we're gonna have it repaired, so maybe I can put some of those reflective stakes near the bars.
I don't know, it wasn't lit, so that's part of the issue.
Well, it's only this high.
Yeah.
Whereas if it were higher, they might have seen it in their rearview mirror.
Yeah.
I'm just hoping we get no snowstorm like we've had in the past, and no rainstorm.
I agree.
The thing is, a lot of things, I just wanna make sure that, just keep that tucked in the back of your mind, so if we do, if it is canceled, like some communities canceled the entire event, and have a backup plan, just in the back of your head.
Yeah. Yeah. Always good thoughts, my, my default would be to connect with D E S about using the community center, should we ever need to do that.
Something with, yeah.
Yeah.
I agree.
P T O is to add to the town common stuff, they're gonna host a trunk or treat in the field at D E S, so not trying to take away, but just to add more options for folks to trick or treat within town. And then we have holiday things, which is planned for December fourteenth, it's a Saturday, and we're still planning to do a tree lighting, and I'm still seeking out someone to donate the tree to plant on the common. If I am unsuccessful in finding someone to donate a tree, the garden club just said I can ask to see if they would help fund one. But the holiday event would take place for tree lighting would be after the cookies with Santa event at D E S, which would be about five fifteen. We're still planning to do carriage rides and kinda tie the two events together, so that it's just one larger event for the entire community, and there was.
Any carriage rides on Halloween?
No.
Okay.
There's a, there's a lot. There's a lot of kids.
In a short amount of time.
Yeah.
Two hours, isn't it?
It's not a lot, yeah. I have a question, for the tree lighting, so I'm still partnering with the garden club to do decorations on the common. There was a question on whether we can start decorating in early November when it's a smidgen bit warmer, and then lights wouldn't come on until the start of December. Would that be an okay thing? The hope is to go bigger than what was done last year.
Yeah, that was pretty sad last year.
Yeah, there was lots of feedback and.
I'm thinking if, I don't have an issue with it, I just think that, um, let's leave the cords that go across the lawn off until,
Until.
It's time to light them, because we have had some issues with people tripping on those potentially, and.
Yeah.
So, what do you guys think?
I concur with the.
The co-weeks is the same boat, it's just cords getting to there.
Waiting.
Yeah, instead of having those cords going, wrap the trees, get all prepped, and then just plug them in after.
When it's time, that's fine, that works.
Because they don't really show if they're not lit, so.
I think it's fine.
And then we were thinking for the lights to be on from five to eight, does that work?
That's a very reasonable.
Okay.
What's the end date, too?
Um, so, I mean typically it's on through the holidays.
January fifteenth, I think it's.
January fifteenth, yeah.
Yeah.
Is that okay, well, you guys, that seems fine still?
I think that's fine.
Okay.
Barring smell.
Yeah.
And then, I guess, sort of a side note, soccer's going really well. We've got twenty-one kids signed up for pre-k, so that's ages two and a half to four.
Wow.
Uh, we've got twenty-six kids in first and second grade, and seven kids in kindergarten. So, it's really neat, and it's a lot of fun.
Yeah, that's awesome.
Soccer's been keeping me busy.
It's nice to have a local as well.
Uh, it is the only reason we have so many first and second graders playing.
Right.
A lot of those kids, like, they refuse to go to Bo, because their friends aren't there. So I said, well, let's, let's try, and yeah, it's going really well.
That's great.
The kids are having fun, the field's working out really great, it's been awesome to communicate with everybody.
Christine, I just wanna say thank you, I think I speak for the whole board, but thank you for stepping up and helping out with the recreation committee, because it's been, it was the fun for several years, and you, just by you putting some, some energy into it, it's, it's made it worthwhile. And so it's a good asset to the community, a good benefit to the community, so thank you.
Absolutely, and then the only other thing I had down to make here, but I'm gonna try for Boston trip. I'm, I'm gonna do it a more unstructured, like, we're not going, we're gonna go down to like Faneuil Hall, but then people can choose their own destination, because there's so many things to do down in Boston, that I feel like if you're gonna go to the theater district, or a museum, or whatever, they can figure that part out, but we can get them there and then bring them home, is my thought process on it. That will happen in November, December sometime, just need to pick a weekend.
Okay.
For myself.
Yeah, that's right.
And for Denver residents, not necessarily.
Correct, correct, yeah, primary, primarily would be Dunbar first, and then setting a date for non-resident, per se, administration, yeah.
I think the only exception would be family members who live, or family members of Dunbar residents, that'd be probably the same status as a Dunbar resident.
Okay, thank you, we're on the mailbox side, and I'm sure she's here with the Rec Committee. So you're looking to oversee the field, I know you're requesting to oversee, oversee the field, so I think we're just soliciting bids for it to do that.
Yeah.
Maybe.
Sorry, I was just asking about the Rec Committees, we're soliciting bids to oversee the field, while she.
I have asked our lawn care to give us a quote, and they just responded today asking for the square footage, so still work in progress unfortunately, but.
Christine's small. Small area, twenty by twenty.
Right.
But the thing is, I, I don't see any, I don't see an issue with that, just as soon as we get the quote in, as long as it's not terribly, a reasonable quote is will be accepted.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think it's a good idea to help that field.
Absolutely.
Do we do any line or fertilizing of that field?
We have done, done anything to any of our fields or grass for over twenty years.
I'm just thinking on that field, I'm thinking if we're doing that much soccer on it now, it's gonna need a little bit more looking into that, so maybe, um.
Assessment.
Yeah, I don't know if the lawn companies, maybe that.
They will do additional services for us upon request at a additional cost, so that's where it started.
Do you have a team to do fertilizing though?
I don't know, I have to ask her.
I think we should, I think we should look into, at least do some fertilizing there a couple times a year, which is gonna be more.
That's what I'm thinking, fertilizing and maybe some line for the initial, you know, to get the field back to the right P A each.
We probably should ask in our quote, at least like starter, some sort of starter fertilizer with the seeding, and line, if they suggest it.
It'd be interesting to see what they recommend too, take, have to look at it and see what they recommend.
Yeah.
Knowing that it hasn't been maintained for years.
A lot of times lawn gear companies don't specialize in, in the fertilizer, just so we know.
Yeah, I'll, I'll reach out to them.
We'll know, when the price come back, we'll know.
Okay.
Because we.
Yeah, I think there's a couple companies you were reaching out to, a couple, which is A S A P.
I just, for now, was A S, A S A P.
Yeah, I understand, but I'd say we'll want to do that a reasonable way, if not.
It just came to me, so.
Okay.
Unexpectedly, I got some feedback actually, and I didn't anticipate this, but we obviously set some basic borders for soccer, and the teachers have said, you have made our job easier at recess, because all I did was line a field, and that for the fifth and sixth graders, there's no fighting, like, just that alone. I didn't see that when I was just doing it, so it was kind of one of those, like, and this is where we share the space, and it all comes together.
It's a bonus, yeah.
It was really neat, I was like, I didn't think they were fighting, so that's great.
What is that, like a paint, a scarfing?
Yeah, just the, just the field paint.
Oh.
So, yeah, I just, I mean, I did the boundaries and boxes and center circle, and just that.
It works, right?
It works.
Um, also, just check with the school board and or clamber somebody about fertilizing the field while kids are there and all that, that one that stepped on.
Now, see, I put fertilizer, I have kids go in it. Sometimes, sometimes when they fertilize, they add insecticide and all that kind of good stuff to it.
Might have to wait until summer then?
I don't know, just, I think if we check with the school board and see if.
Sometimes after one rain, it's usually okay to use after one rain.
Yeah.
Yeah, I just, I wanna make sure that the school kids are all over and rolling around. Yeah.
Okay.
Chewing hot. Yeah, so.
Got it.
Yeah. Okay. Well, thank you very much for coming, I appreciate it.
Absolutely.
As Mike said, we're glad to have somebody to take the bull by the horns.
I'm trying.
Don't be, don't be afraid to ask for a couple more cowgirls.
Never. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Ian, you're up next.
Okay. I've come before you a while ago.
Oh, no, you gotta come right up front. Not getting out of that either.
The full hot seat.
Say your name for the record.
Okay. Enid Larson, thirty-two Burt's View Drive.
Yes.
And I've come before you a while ago, it was right before Old Home Day, requesting a quilt, a local quilt, be hung upstairs, Mary had one downstairs she didn't really care for, so we inherited that, and Greg, your handyman.
There you go.
Okay. He's trying to get back.
Okay.
So I'd like to request one more, and only one more, to be hung.
You said you weren't gonna come back.
Well, that was just my. Um, because there's the one to the right of the doors, as you're standing on the stage, looking back. I'd like to get one more on the other side, just to balance it out. I think aesthetically it would look better, and also for the acoustics.
There was some discussion of a flag being hung on that side, but flags that.
That's the one that Fred Mullin has?
Yeah, that's what I was thinking.
Well, what about if we did this, if we, because we have some other wall space available, because a quilt is obviously bigger than the flag, and it will absorb more.
I don't know, these I think were big flags, but.
My, well.
He had a couple of them, I thought.
Yeah, well, he has that one in particular, is it a Grange flag?
I think it sounded like that, yeah, the original Grange flags, that had to be cleaned or something.
Yeah. I would worry a little bit about something like that, unless it were under probably museum tempered glass or something, because over time, anything like that, you know, has a chance of deteriorating.
Yeah.
I fully understand it would be a very nice addition there. But, that being said, I would still like to request having one more local quilt. I've been given leads to a couple of people, you know, ladies that have made the quilts, that have a historic, you know, Dunbar mean. And I, well, you probably haven't been up, but Wednesday, the, yesterday, the stage curtain people finally came back. It only took five phone calls, they came back, the drapes have been adjusted, they don't look like a little boy with two short pants, and the black draping has been put up, and it really made a difference.
And the black draping is sliding as well?
Yes, yes, it parts also, it's on a pulley system.
Okay.
And between the two, I think, when there are events up there, if things are not on the stage, if those are both closed, it's really gonna go a long ways toward absorbing, you know, the echoing up there.
Yeah, and sounds good, because we have a, we have a concern prior to us later, concerning sound, so, before anything's done, I'd like to entertain some of your, your concepts and your ideas.
Thank you, I've had quite a few, shall we say, comments about the echoes up here and the sound, but.
Well, I, I've heard some complaints, and then some compliments too, so we're getting a mixed bag, but I think a quilt, I, I have no problem with one additional quilt.
No, but I wanna, I do wanna say that, you know, I think we'll, we'll probably as a board allow that second quilt, but also keep in the back of your mind, we may move that depending on these flags or something else that might wanna go there.
I would, I, I would concur with that.
Yeah.
But just so, just so you're aware of that fact, that that, you know, may happen, because we've had requests for some other things that weren't quite ready to go up at this time, so. We wanna, we wanna make sure that it's open to us and.
Yeah, and we can always shift some of the pictures that we had on too, if that becomes necessary.
Oh, no.
Oh, no, huh?
Well, the, the center grid on each of the windows there, so it wouldn't look very nice to slide it to the side.
I'm sorry, I forgot to turn this thing off.
Okay, but yeah, I think that, go ahead and finish that for the second quilt, and just keep in mind that, you know, we've had some other requests up there, so sometime we might have to make other decisions.
Of course, we need to put it up for the handyman.
Yeah, if Greg can do that again, and we will probably need to get something to hang it on. The other one already had a hanger, but it's pretty basic, it's just basically like a, a good sturdy grog, and then the supports. Because the original one that Greg hung was hanging down.
If you, if you could, why don't you coordinate getting that stuff, and we'll have Lena pay for it.
Okay, yeah, I'll be glad to shop for it.
All right, you'll get the stuff that, you know, make it, kinda match the one that's already there?
Oh, yeah, I don't wanna have it something weird looking.
So. And then we'll just take care of it.
Okay. Well, thank you very much, I, I appreciate you listening to this.
No more coming back for another one now. Before you leave, Leo did have one question, you all set, Leo?
No, I didn't have any questions.
Oh, I saw you had to wave your hand around there.
Oh, no.
We'll see you in three months for another quilt.
No, true and untrue, Dave and I kinda stuck a compromise, so, thank you very much.
Thank you for coming in.
You went with me to get the credit card to make that purchase.
Okay, I will do all, I search your first name, let you know when.
Okay. Garden club people aren't here, you know?
No, she just asked me to pass this on to you, so I'll speak on her behalf. The garden club meets monthly, and they book or schedule their space up on the second floor every three months, like the policy reads, and because they meet Monday nights on occasion, the office is closed for a holiday, or they don't get to the office in time to pick up the big key, so she was wondering if she could possibly have a key assigned to them so that they could have access to the front door. They've already been given their personal pin, but it's getting the key to get into the front hallway entrance. That's in progress.
Could you also expand on your thought you shared with me earlier today?
Yeah, I don't, I don't know how the board feels about setting up a lock box, some kind of a key.
A pin control lock box.
That would have a pin for someone to open.
I think that I like people coming to our boards, we know what's going on.
No, 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 I'm saying they've already, they're already established, they've already.
I know, I know, if they're not coming to you to get a key, why don't we just leave it unlocked, you know? The lock box is gonna be the same number for everybody. You have a lock box hanging off the side of the building.
So they scratch the lock box.
Yeah, I don't think that's a, you're never gonna know anything about who went in or who didn't go in, the whole part of that, you know, touchpad, as we know.
Yeah, well, we can also run reports on the touchpad, so.
I mean, we have more than one key, right?
We have several keys.
So they could come in three days early and get a key if they needed to.
What she's asking for is if she can have a permanent key.
Oh, I know, I understand what she's asking for, right?
Yep.
I'm saying that, you know, the fact that we're closed on Mondays or whatnot. I don't know, if, if we give one to them, somebody else can ask for one.
It may be, it may be open to that precedent.
That's what I think too.
Because what about the Boy Scouts, they meet once, once a month there too, and he's gotta come all the way from Bo to pick up a key.
Well, I know that I have been called at home to come and unlock the doors, because they forgot to get the key before we close at four.
Don't pick up anymore.
And there's, there's an art group that meets up there, and she had to turn, cancel the meeting, but she forgot to pick up her key, and then.
That's what they should do, and after doing that once, they're not gonna forget.
Exactly, exactly.
All right, no.
I guess, I don't wanna have ten keys out there, wouldn't make any sense, you know?
Yeah, yeah.
If we let one that's gonna continue, then what, we're gonna be like we used to be, we don't know where they are, who has them.
And how do you stop, where do you draw the line, say you can't have?
I know where we draw, we have to get a new lock there and start from scratch.
Okay.
Yeah, I think I'd rather have them come to you and come early, if they're gonna come three days early or whatever.
Yeah, and if there's nothing scheduled for the weekend, then we can.
It reminds, nothing against the garden club, it's, it's just giving them out like that, I think that.
It's all drop a pin on his box and see what's he doing.
You can't treat one special, and then treat another position without the same courtesy.
Well, and, and there's, there's times that the select board has decided to lock the building up. And if, for different events, and if somebody has a key and they open the thing up, and then, you know.
Lock it, whatever.
And don't lock it, news starts happening we're unaware of, I just think, I don't know. Let's keep going the path we are, I think, if we could.
Okay, no problem, I said I would ask.
Thanks for bringing it up, though. We're at.
Number five.
Number five, we have an old town hall curtain rod up there, which is really authentic, and I think it's the original one from late nineteen oh eight, built out of several pieces of wood and a round cylinder, and I hate to destroy it or throw it out, because I think that it's, I don't know.
Can it be kept at the very rear end of the stage, at the back end of the stage?
That's where it was, and they just moved it, I'll go up next week and look better at it.
Yeah. Because I hate to move it out of the building, then moisture can get, it's in a nice preserved area.
Even if, even if we hide it up above one of the other ones that you can't really see from the public side.
Yeah, let's say we don't do anything with it, let's say twenty years from now, someone finds a great use for that antique item.
Yeah.
I like to make sure we don't throw it away, and, and at least have something that's still operational and in good condition. If we put it down in one of those containers down there, I think the ocean's gonna get to it.
I mean, I think it's one piece wood, I think that's thirty feet long, I mean, it's something that's really well-made, and for a hundred years ago, to last that long.
Either on the back side of the wall, either hung up, or I'll put it on the very far end of the, where the curtain is, on the very end.
So I'll look at that, maybe when we have the guy over there doing all the work, we can figure out.
Yeah.
Best place to store it.
And, and maybe some brackets made up, so it can't roll or fall.
I, I like that idea of preserving for the future, because we may not have anything right now, but twenty years from now, we'll never know.
It's something through that whole thing I set aside, so we didn't lose it, and.
Hey, I concur with you.
We can't.
Justin?
I don't have a use for it right now, but I think that. Okay, so the consensus is we'll find a spot.
Okay, in that, in the same building, not the basement.
Right. And, and another thing, they wanted to throw it in one of the containers, you know, and.
Oh, that, that's me, that's.
I said, no, I don't think one.
You see what happens, some, just as a side note, some of the election stuff, Woody was proactive in the sense that he wants to store it off on pallets, because it was stored in the bottom, and they ask it air underneath it, so it'd keep the moisture mildew to a minimum.
Yeah, right. Okay, Lena has third quarter expenses here for us to review.
And revenues, yeah.
And revenues.
I'm gonna start with.
The good news, the revenues.
Let's start with the revenues, because that's the good news. It's a back-to-back for. It's a back to back report, save on paper a little bit.
Of course it is.
Yeah. First section on page one, a very top land use change. We've exceeded our budget. Um, we had projected sixty thousand as a low number. We're in at eighty thousand nine twenty-five and that's entirely the fifty percent that the town receives on the land use change tax. I do have several still outstanding and those who continue to be processed as we move along. We've got three months is possible, I'll read.
Yeah, I've heard a couple more as well, so.
Yeah, yep, um, other.
Bottom of the page, Lean?
Bottom of the page, a highlight of two seventy-five.
Interest?
And when it's in parentheses, we've over collected, so we are exceeding the budget for these categories by twenty-seven thousand.
Yield tax and whatnot.
That's the combined tax.
Property.
Yield tax, other tax and interest tax, so we're above our general budget for the category. Next category is licenses, permits and fees. Um, currently I got, um Jennifer was nice enough to export her September revenue. We still have three months remaining. An outstanding uncollected balance is seventy-two thousand four sixty-three. That's an average of twenty-four thousand one fifty-four per month. Um, I looked at the revenues from December, from twenty twenty-three for October through December. They, she had collected two hundred and one thousand two seventy-five, which is an average of sixty-seven thousand dollars. So I don't feel like there's gonna be any issue whatsoever in meeting this goal that we set for our projected revenues.
Okay.
Uh, next group again is just the uh total license and permits and fees, and that's carried through the category up above, so.
Building permits is ahead?
Yep, they're over ten grand already and we still have three months to go, so we're looking good there. Uh, revenues from other governments, um in this category, highway block grant, we haven't received our fourth payment from highway block. That is um, our total payment is uh thirty-two thousand six seventy. So the total revenue for the year will be one oh seven zero zero three. And that is one of those numbers that when we set the tax rate, the DRA uses every penny. So that will be adjusted and I'll go back in and adjust the current year budget to reflect the actual. Next page, uh flood control reimbursement, uh we had budgeted seventy thousand. We received the payment, it's seventy-one thousand one twenty-eight, so the DRA will adjust that number at tax rate setting. Rooms and meals, we had budgeted one hundred and seventy-five thousand. You can see that it's zero because I haven't received that number yet. But the DRA just posted the rooms and meals distribution report, which is in your summary packet. And the town, um it's based on population, our population is three thousand sixty-eight. And we will be receiving two hundred eighty-seven eight fifty-four point four seven for Dunbar.
Same as prior year.
Exactly, so two years in a row. I did see a report that's a biannual report that I'm gonna re- look at again. And it looked to me like the next cycle is gonna be lower for the next two years, so we don't wanna increase over in budget, unestimated, and have, find that we're not gonna get those monies. But I, I think there was a number there that I can um get to the board so that you understand where we are at and what if this number, one seventy-five, works for us.
And it goes directly, DRA takes it completely.
He, they add it to the tax rate setting.
Good.
Next group is income from departments, the combined for all those category accounts is fifty-five thousand. Uh, we've just exceeded that income from departments, that includes our recycling income and other miscellaneous disposal fees for the transfer station planning and zoning fees, other items like that. And so we've exceeded that budget by twenty-eight hundred dollars. Sale town property, on the nineteenth, board voted to accept the proceeds from the sale of the fire department vehicle less the fee for the broker's fee. So that's what you see there is the thirteen thousand fifty dollars, which I will um apply to a a warrant article that we um craft up for the next budget season.
To put in a capital reserve fund.
Yep. So currently, our budget was set at one million two eighty-nine five. We've collected a hundred and eight million, uh, one hundred, one hundred and eight.
One point eight million.
One point eight million, I'm I'm tired of being here all day. Um, so that leaves an outstanding two hundred and eight thousand seven thirty-one to collect. If you add the rooms and meals that hasn't been entered in here, we've already exceeded that by eighty thousand. We still have three months of motor vehicle registrations and then the last quarter of highway block grant. And that's not to mention all the other uh incidentals like permits and whatnot that we receive on a weekly basis. So I think we're looking good for our revenues, and we will have some surplus. And expenses. This one here, I don't know why the columns show the way they do, but the current year budget's on the left-hand side. Uh, the remaining balance is on the right-hand side and the percent balances, balances all the way to the right. And uh, perfect world, we should be at twenty-five percent because we have one quarter left, one quarter remaining. Um, I do have, I highlighted just a couple of items, the computer support services. I went through the detail of expenses and I noticed that we did not receive one of our bigger um support services for BMSI and all the software that we get billed annually, and that's fourteen-five, so it's quite a bit of that, even though it says sixty-one percent. We will see some of these things that either they get billed towards the end of the year or the very beginning of January for maintenance agreements and whatnot. I don't see anything in this telephone section, assessing um appraisal services, we get billed once um. The whole calendar year is done, so I'll be making sure I stay on top of them to get that invoice into the town, so we don't get behind. Legal services, we're still looking okay, we're at fifty-three percent. The personnel administration, I went through a lot of the numbers because I'm finding that I have concerns that we may overspend on some of those lines. Um, Medicare, for example, should have an excess of about eight hundred dollars. Um, social security will have an excess of about forty-seven hundred if we stay on track the way we are. Retirement will be, I have a shortfall of four thousand six sixty-three, and that's based on overtime and special duty impacts that I didn't anticipate. That is um out of my control, so I'll take a look at that a little bit closer next year. Another one that is going to see an impact is the health insurance. We had, I will be overspent by nine thousand five seventy-five due to a change in a plan that is uh not always open during open enrollment. If you become a new employee full-time, you can enroll at that time, so between the plan change and what I did observe in my calculations is I had it listed up, the stipend and ru- of um health included in this line, this is where we paid out, but I only budgeted a hundred and forty when I should have budgeted a hundred and forty-nine. So I'll be short about ten thousand nine sixty-one. Or excuse me, nine thousand seven, five seventy-five between the two. Planning and zoning is still on track, we're at forty-two percent.
Overall, I just wanna say, if you look at the bottom line, your first administration, you're still not that far a progress.
No, it, there is, there are other lines within that will offset some of it, but these are the things that you have to pay attention to as you go through the year.
Especially for next year's budget.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Uh, planning zoning on the next page is still in line with their budget, they still have forty-two percent. Uh, general government buildings, which includes the building maintenance and lawn care and fuel and electricity and heat. Um, and our office cleaning, all of these fall into this category, we're still at fifty percent. Uh, we have um one bid here tonight for the sign at the fire department, but overall, I think we're in a good place for that group of accounts. Cemetery budget, we're still at forty percent. Property insurance, that's dispersed in one lump sum, the insurance others for our copay. If we have a, an accident, then we have the money to cover our deductible. Police department is at twenty percent, so they're still bottom line in that range. Chris is really good about watching um the total expenses. Fire department will be a little bit high on a percent left because there's um John tends to wait towards the end of the year. His, his part-time administration, which is for the fire calls, he's been um dispersing that a little bit better. And it, I think it's working out well for his budget. And then the the remainders, again, he holds off on protection equipment and whatnot to make sure that he has the funding there to respond to any type of mutual aid or some urgency that might come up. Building department, they're at twenty-seven percent, so that's still in their range for this time of the year. Emergency management, that is um a category that John um budgets for um the community center in cases uh they have to open up and they have to need some funding to supply things for emergencies. Highway department is slightly over, they're at twenty-three percent. Again, I'm sure you guys are aware that all the work that they've been doing within the town on the roads, that's doing a great job.
And just, highway department, we do have a hiring actions out?
It's been advertised through Concord Monitor and uh for a week, and then they have a thirty-day um insert and online viewing, and we weren't receiving any action with that. And I spoke to Jeff, he asked me to try another paper, so I just put it in the Manchester paper for another week. And they also have a thirty-day um online, it's kind of like the Indeed, where you pay this fee and you'll get uh these emails sent out to everyone that might be interested in that, my work. So he's had one response, I don't know if he's contacted them.
Okay, thank you.
Solid waste at thirty-seven percent. I don't know that I see anything that's unusual. With the different account lines, welfare, she's doing a great job again. Try and make sure that individuals who apply for assistance are gonna be given resources like the Salvation Army and um community action and other, any other resources that she can provide for them to help them in the event that they're not, they don't qualify for assistance. Parks and Recs, and we spent the next few weeks. Old Home Day, they did a good job, they do have some surplus or some unanticipated revenue that they don't seem to be um in the need for, so that will lapse to the general fund. And then libraries, right on track, they'll get their last payment by the month of November. So we're looking really good.
I think spending much looks great, Dave, I think it looks, it does, it has a radiation cap.
Yeah. Thank you, Lean, for going over those with us.
Yep.
The next thing on our agenda is review bid quotes for the fire department sign. Um, this is a fire police station sign. We've got some preliminary signs made up for samples. And a secondary one of the safety complex instead of fire and police departments. In review with the board, we've all had a time to look at, did you guys like departments better or um safety complex?
I I made material, I I I can see what you guys think, but I'm not, I'm not.
I like the departments, the way it's showed on the signage. And I've been seeing that safety complexes are saved for kind of new buildings, and this one isn't a brand-new building, so I didn't wanna label it like a new safety complex that.
I'm not partial to either way.
Yeah.
Department.
Departments.
Fire, police, department.
Departments, true, because that's, that's okay. That's who we'll go with then. And your name for the.
Sure. I mean, that's a DPD, you know?
It's called, it's called the blame line.
So, just so the board is aware, I got one initial quote and knowing the policy, I blacked out information uh related to the company name and provided it to two other companies, one in Concord and one in Manchester. The one in Concord has not returned my um request for a quote, and the other individual did provide us with a quote.
So we have two good quotes.
We have two good quotes.
Okay, in reviewing these quotes, I think the quote, the selectmen have looked at these today as I did. Um, the quote for Sousa Sign includes the sign and the installation labor and uh also sign dimensional upgrades. Their total is fifty-one ninety-nine, and fast signs, uh estimate with the artwork and the installation site survey comes up to ten thousand zero zero one point zero zero, so ten thousand and one dollars. Sousa Sign had done our signs for the town in the past, so it looks like they're, they're treating us pretty decently and though it's gonna take a while to make the sign up, so I'd like to get this underway. So I'd like to make a motion that we go with quote number twenty-five eleven. Um, before I do the motion, I'm gonna ask if there's any public comment on it.
As you said, they uh, they've done work for the town before and the town's always been happy with it.
Right.
So the number sounds good, the the vendor's good, I don't see a problem with him.
And we did quality work, so. Uh, have we asked Chief Wiggins or Chief Ramon?
We'll ask him later to just double check which way he wants it, but the price doesn't change, so.
Right.
Um, the size, he, he was aware of and asked us to make it, and I, I like this little arch in the center which kind of follows what they had already. The uh existing side was all faded out when Chief Wiggins took it down.
The quote he had given had a price plus an upgrade, so what is it exactly that you're?
What is the upgrade?
It's for dimensional components, converting department shields and text to fire and police to raise three-quarter inch PVC flush mounted to backer of panel. So fire and police would um.
Stand out.
Stand out, and that was included in that total.
Okay.
Uh, and it gives you a full five-year warranty on there as well, so.
We're gonna get a couple of lights installed above that?
I don't think it would be a bad idea, we'll get the sign and then we'll, we'll call and ask.
Get a couple of LED lights that.
Set out over it.
Yeah.
So anyway, I'll make a motion again to accept the quote from Sousa Signs, quote number twenty-five eleven. Number one option, which is gonna have fire and police departments on it. And the total on that quote is fifty-one ninety-nine, including the uh dimensional upgrades as well as the warranty and installation and the sign itself with reflective graphics.
How second page? How long is it gonna take them, though?
Six to eight weeks, I believe, is what their quote was originally.
We'll have to, before they end the year, be able to look at doing some lighting before they end the year.
Yeah.
Which one is that, is that A, the choice that you?
It is A, choice A.
Okay.
So motion's been made, send it along in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Uh, the only thing, you were gonna ask the fire chief or what, or the chiefs for what, for the uh, something about the sign configuration, what were you gonna ask him?
Uh, he's already stated what he wanted, just whether he wants compartments or a safety.
What did he want, Chief Wiggins? What did he want?
He just wanted to make sure it had the uh fire and police both on it.
Okay, so he was in material about the.
Yeah, and he wanted similar to the previous size.
Yeah, I think we're good then. Thank you.
Okay, the Energy Expo, which is gonna be on October twenty-sixth from the the sign I had seen today, which I thought it was on the nineteenth, the same day as Cipio Page is unveiling, but I guess it is a different day. So it looks like October twenty-sixth, it will be at the elementary school in Bo. I did notice there was a sign up at Robert Rogers Road. They're asking to put signs up on Page's Corner, and I don't know if we have the permission to give them.
I concur with you, Dave, we do not.
Right, so. I think if they put it up there, it's up by their own chance. It could get stolen, but I certainly don't mind if they wanna put one in the town common here.
I was, you took the words out of my, I was gonna say the same.
And 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 I would even incur them to ask the school to put one over there by the school, because a lot of parents going in and out of it.
And I would also recommend that we put something on our bulletin board here too.
And Lean, can you, I I don't know if John has asked you, but maybe the, it's time to put it on the town website as well.
It already is.
Okay.
I'll double check. We've got a lot of things going up there these days.
Yeah, that's okay.
So with consensus, it's okay to put it on our common, our website, our bulletin board, and then.
The other signs are not that.
He, he just requested that we print some colored copies of the flyer, and that's what I'll be posting on the website, so I knew it was there. It's in my office, I'll get it up tomorrow. On the website, yeah.
It's, I guess it's at your own risk if you're supposed to pay this for it.
Okay, I'll let him know that.
Although, we have publicly um shown some concern here as a board that we do not like to have Page's Corner littered with distractions.
Yeah.
And so, from an ethical standpoint, we recommend not to use Page's Corner.
The only, the only nice thing is that these are not banners, they're just small state signs.
Even harder to see more distracted.
You think so?
They're squinting.
So it's in the spirit of.
Do we really want to say anything, Leo?
All right, then I'll let him know, if he wants to put someone on Page's Corner, he's to contact the OT.
Yeah, well, you know, someone asked me about that, what are they going to do about all of the political signs? And I said, the, the state won't do anything unless there's a complaint filed.
Right, that's exactly right.
So if.
And our, our police are not going to run up every time there's one sign stuck there either.
No, right, the, the state's involved and, and so if nobody complains, the state's not going all over the state looking for these things all the time, you know?
Right.
So.
So that's why I, it's, it's up to them, it's up to them what they.
But we recommend not, I think as.
And we just, we recommend them, they can't do it.
Stick DOT, right.
Whether they're doing it or not, we're staying away from it.
No, but, but our concern still, I hate to have another distraction there, because we've been doing so good.
Well, I'm sure, let them know that we have had in the past prompted DOT to remove the sign, so two things.
Just ask them to touch base with DOT or, or do it on their own accord. Like Leo said, there's already plenty to look at there again.
But if it gets too many, we can actually make a, ask the favorite police chief, make a call.
Yeah.
And clear it out if we need to, if it gets too distracting.
Yeah.
I don't want that more, I don't want, I don't want a board member squinting too much.
Good thing I don't try.
You don't need to go there, he's just complaining. All right, that's one of the mailbox items. We already reviewed item number A, which was the overseeing of the field by the rec committee. Again, I want to reiterate that we check with the school board to make sure that we do any proper precautions for the kids on the field or wait till off season. Item number B. It looks like Donna Dunn is asking for reimbursement for bandstand bunting flags.
And she asking as an individual or representing a group?
Oh, hold on. Lynn did remind her that the funds are controlled by the select board and she needs to ask them for approval before any future purchases. Looks like this purchase was made, I don't have the amount here.
Three hundred, it's right there, request three hundred.
Oh, in the pile, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Don't forget to add. Two hundred and thirty dollars eighty-five cents. I'm going to recommend, because it was already done, that we go ahead and take care of this through the fund set up for the bandstand.
We do have the money there.
Yeah. And she's got a copy of the original invoice as well.
Where are the bunting supplies in fact, are they tossed?
They're, they're poly cotton five stripe with stars, three by six, quantity of three to put around the bands.
Yeah, they toss it then in the season?
No, she says they, they go, they last about ten years, last one is two thousand fourteen, they had, they take them down.
They got it for twelve, the last ones, I think for twelve years now.
Twelve years, okay.
That's a bargain.
Yeah.
I, I, I have consensus there, Dave, with you.
Okay, so I'll make a motion that we pay that bill on the bandstand fund, Mike, second that?
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm gonna miss one.
We had an email complete. Regarding the town hall second floor acoustics.
I think we may have addressed that with putting up, doing some mitigation already.
Yeah.
I'd say let's just see how it goes.
Yeah.
Takes time.
I will say, I've been up to several events, some with speakers, some without speakers, just talking. And bands with and without microphones and I haven't found the acoustics to be bad there at all. But that, that, that's just me, I know other people have said the same thing. Some people say they're, they're not good still, but we are, we just added additional curtain this week that hasn't been up there, so. I think it's kind of a work in progress, we knew putting that up, it wouldn't be perfect to start with and it's something that we're working on.
I concur.
Can I share that email that we received with the compliments?
Of the what?
With her, with the sponsor?
I would think so, sure.
Just because I think she needs.
It's a mixed, it's been a mixed response of.
Yeah, yeah.
And things, but we are still addressing some of the acoustic issues.
Yeah, still addressing it, yeah.
Takes time.
Because I think Mary Gerard is one of the. Most active groups that utilizes that second floor and she's done everything from, you know, live music, you know, exercise. And the email she gave.
I, I recall just a small group of just about twenty people with a speaker on the floor, no microphone.
Yeah.
And I, I, it was fantastic, I had no issues with it.
And, and she's talking more in her letter about mostly people with hearing, hearing issues and hearing aids. That type of room might always have an echo for those type of people that have the hearing aids, I'm not sure that we're going to be able to solve that. She was talking about acoustical panels on the walls or ceilings and I don't think it's the type of building that we want to add those. Fancy shaped acoustical panels to. She said the curtain did nothing, so.
Well, we have additional curtain, you have a new curtain right now and, and a new quilt on the wall, so, and the flag's upcoming. So I'd say let's, as I think comment was made in the audience, let, let it work, work itself out with some time behind it.
Yeah.
And see how it goes, will we address it down, down the road?
It's a new thing.
Okay, we have an email here, comment, right here, comment from the library director, host of events and positive comments.
It's for acoustics.
Yeah, so within the same breath, I got one and then the other came.
Hi Lynn, since our reopening in April of twenty twenty-three, libraries hosted many events utilizing at the upstairs. Our programs have either been one or two educational speakers, talking to the audience or musical performances. With one person singing or playing an instrument to the audience, guitar, fiddle, banjo. Ukulele, spoons, bongos, drums, our audience usually reminded to sit close to the speaker performer. The audience is typically quiet, the library is not held in conference type activities or any large upstairs meetings. All performers and performers, mostly especially the musicians, have liked the space, the acoustics, the elevator, the beauty of the space. They call the acoustics live, they did not need or want any amplification, all they wanted was a chair. Two children's performers played on the stage and brought their own equipment, which they did not use, all others performed from the floor. All educational speakers have enjoyed presenting upstairs, they especially enjoyed technology, the pull-down screens, the projectors, the ease of it all. No one has wanted to use any microphones except one presenter. Most of all, these presenters around the state in various function halls and meeting spaces, they are used to field conditions. Each and every performer commented on how lovely the room was, how high praise the projector and technology was. And did ask one solo performer to come back and bring his trio. He declined because it said it would definitely not be an appropriate space for the trio. Too small for their loud sound, they play a lot of Capital Center in Concord, they need more adequate. More than adequate, they need more than the upstairs would offer. The only critical comment from the floors of the audience was that it was either too cold in the winter or too hot in the summer. And that's one thing I am in the works on. One woman out from Dubar said the chairs were too hard. We like that so they don't stay. She said she normally starts off her evening by asking people to sit closer so they can hear better. I've been to several events up there, Mary's done, they're great events and a lot of times people spread out. There's enough seating up there for about a hundred and five or a hundred and ten and she just pulls them closer so they can all hear and it seems to work really well when I've been up there, so.
And I, I just say we just, this monitor, continue to monitor and if there's a problem, we address it, but I'd say we're making some, some small steps.
We're making forward progression, it's a work in progress.
We'll just continue to monitor.
Well, and a lot of these things weren't done when these performers were there, so it could only, I think, improve since then, so. And I have, you know, many people have said that that space is much better than a lot of the towns they go and, and play in, so.
Or no space.
Right. Okay.
Thank you, Dave.
We got an email from the welfare director regarding remote login.
Yeah, she's having some difficulties, it's something I'm working on with her, but I can't seem to resolve it. It may result in adding another user, which is a hundred and forty dollars a month for the computer support and additional licensing. So it's just something that the board, with the town is growing, we have a lot more needs and right now we have two stations that are being shared. With Municipal Resources Inc., the welfare director, my assistant secretary and the tax collector. So they're, we're almost exceeding the capacity of trying.
Is your, does tech budget support any addition at this point?
I'm looking at my numbers very closely, so I'm.
If not, no. That year will budget it.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, next year for sure.
And after, I have to, yeah.
I know that in my office, when I go to get into the Sonic Wallet, I'm, it's beyond as well.
But the other thing too, though, is that it's the space, we've got that extra desk in my office, so we'll, that would be the location for the next computer station. But as the assessing department gets, grows and they utilize the tax collector's office or Joe Marie's desk when she's not here. It's again, we're growing, population's going up, we're over three thousand, easily three thousand sixty-eight. And we're just going to need to take a look at what we have to, that will allow us to do the job that we need to do to keep the, you know, things moving.
Yeah. Okay, we have the.
I just want to say, I would not wait to next year's budget, if you need to get it done, we should execute on it.
I will, I will, I'll definitely let you give you, keep you informed.
Okay. As Lynn had stated earlier, we've got the rooms and meals distribution portion, she's done the math out, so the rooms and meals be. Two hundred eighty-seven thousand eight fifty-four, same as last year. We haven't gotten that yet, but she's got the report on it.
So in case the board is asking, I, with this information from the rooms and meals, that was the last thing that all the municipalities were waiting to set their tax rate. And I was told that there were five communities that were set today, so it's a matter of days now that I'll probably be hearing from the DRA to set the town's tax rate.
Okay, I'm going to, I've finished the mailbox items, bring it back for public comment one more time. Jennifer, have anything for public comment? No, okay. Bringing it back to the town administrator.
Yeah, we've covered everything.
And I'm going to bring it to the selectmen now, so we get this portion on the meeting if we go in and not bother. Do you guys have anything for the?
I just want to say, I, I did hit the fire department's luncheon special they had, chicken barbecue.
You hit it? With your truck?
No, no, but it was well done, John, I thought it was, I just want to give kudos to fire department for doing a good job this year. Was the turnout as good as previous years?
No, it was not a little bit.
Yeah.
But, yeah, still pretty good numbers, so. No, one of the held out wasn't too hot and it rained, so it was time we, we had cooked the chicken, so.
Cooked the chicken was well.
Got a little cold, so we got a little nervous, we weren't getting them out at the second setting, but we got them done.
It was well done, thank you, it was a good, it was a good event, I thought.
You're going to have the same time in, in that month next year as well?
Might go back to June, I'll discuss it, see. I don't know if that, if the month really affected it or not, but who knows?
I'd love to make it there one day if my schedule allows me to.
It's pretty good food.
You're excited for it.
Okay, I have one thing to bring up. I've been going through emails with Lynn in reference to standard power. And what inspired the Dunbar Community Power, I was a little upset following the emails. We made a motion at our last meeting to reiterate what we had done back in December of last year. And when we talked to Bob Hayden that was here, we talked about, we were one of the most proactive towns as far as doing our public hearing. Having all of our meetings, getting it out to the public, doing it at town meeting, having our vote. And we did all that and pushed it through so that we could be in a proper buying time that I felt for this fall. And looking at these new emails, the PUC hasn't accepted us yet and she hopes to have it within the next thirty days. But I, I asked her if Bob still worked there, because I was very upset, because we had pushed this through. And after it had gone through town meeting, it was thirty to sixty days from that point. And really, now it ended up being thirty to sixty days from the end of the summer, because it seemed like they kind of dropped the ball, I think they were busy on some other avenues in their office. So I called this girl Emily up today and I, I said, you know, I think we need to have another meeting with Bob, because I said, this is getting pushed off. She says, well, as soon as they do, we can put you in the buying group for the winter. I says, I've been following power for the last five or six years, it goes up in the middle of the winter. I said, the last two years prior to this last one they had, and the only reason this last winter was lower is because they overcharged us on previous years and they had to come down. From Eversource, so I said, every other winter we've had, they had it almost doubled, it went up to twenty-two cents on just the, the power end of it. So I said, I didn't want to be buying in the middle of the winter and spring, because it's typically been higher. She stated that she believes it's going to be different this year, the natural gas is real cheap and being election year, she thinks spring is going to be her positive buy-in. With that being said, they've had a couple of other towns in there at ten and a half cents. I was telling her that, I was hoping we could be in the nine, nine point four. And if you lock that in over a three-year period, you might be able to not have to look at it and jump back and forth between all these companies. So I know that we don't have to take any obligation on when they come back to us with the numbers, but I was hoping we were done at this point. She did say that the market is still unfavorable, because Unitil and Eversource are still very low right now as compared to the market out there, so. She feels that we are going to be okay trying to do a purchase this spring instead of, she, she thinks it's going to stay low this winter. I, their rates are going to come out another couple of months for their next six months, so I guess we'll see where it goes, but.
Are you a wagering person, David?
Dave?
Yeah.
I just locked in at ten cents.
You did? Yeah.
Through direct.
Because with the co-op and where I locked in, there's no fee for canceling.
Right.
So if the co-op group comes in lower, I can drop them and move to the co-op group, you know?
Yeah.
But at ten cents, I figured that's not a bad.
And I heard Concord had locked in at nine point four and I was hoping to get around nine point four for our town.
Right.
But, you know, she's saying we haven't actually missed the window, because their buyouts have been around ten and a half cents.
Yeah.
So she said the one town that they did, or one group that they did the purchase for was at ten and a half cents. And the utilities have been lower than that right now, so she said, you know, that's kind of a negative impact on the communities, they don't have to go with it. But she said that basically all their groups are holding off right now anyway. So, you know, I just, I wanted, I wanted to give some feedback on it, because we told the public pretty much that this fall was the year.
And we were led to believe, we were led to believe that too.
I was pretty much demanding that we had Bob Hayden come back in front of us and explain, but after going through it with her. I don't think there's much we can do at this point.
We still wait out to spring then.
Yeah.
But she doesn't anticipate the winter work, well.
But Lynn had said, because I had asked the question right after it came through, I said, what, what do you mean, next spring, we were supposed to have this this year? And, you know, so Lynn followed up with an email and when, when she did, the girl responded and that's when I decided to call her direct and ask her, because her response was kind of.
Yeah, so I'm kind of like the, the middle person, the administrator that go through my email as a town official. But the energy committee is the community power committee and so why.
They've been pretty quiet on it.
They haven't been emailing any of you, I've had to report, forward all my emails to you guys, because it's like, how come nobody else is being CC'd on this?
At our next meeting, I'll bring that up to them as well.
And I think it's important, because I don't have a problem, you know, being the, the channel, but you guys are all the techies with understanding what you're doing and what's involved with this.
They actually are supposed to be providing the information to us and we just make the decisions and understand what's going on.
Yeah.
I couldn't understand why it was getting pushed off so long. Basically, it sounds like the paperwork took a little longer than it ought to, so.
Too much too long.
Yes, yeah.
So, anyway, we're, we're back on track now, we're at the state, she hasn't sent the letter out to the PUC yet explaining the few four items she brought up. For discrepancies and she said she will get that out today. So anyway, I think we're, we're on track as best we can and I'll work with the energy committee to make sure that they start hopping on this a little bit.
Yeah.
Anybody have any questions about the energy committee? Okay. So that being said, thanks for sending that out, Lynn, and getting that taken care of. Okay, so that being said, thanks for sending that out, Lynn, and getting that taken care of. And that's all I have, we have a, we have a non-public tonight, so. We're not going to adjourn this meeting here, we're going to make a motion to go to non-public per RSA ninety-one dash.